Good evening, everyone, and welcome to Spokane City Council. We will start with our land acknowledgement. We acknowledge that we are on the unceded land of the Spokane people, and that these lands were once the major trading center for the Spokanes, as they share this place and welcome other area tribes through their relations, history, trade, and ceremony. We also want to acknowledge that the land holds the spirit of the place through its knowledge, culture, and all the original peoples since time immemorial. As we take a moment to consider the impacts of colonization, may we also acknowledge the strength and resiliency of the Spokanes and their relatives. As we work together making decisions that benefit all, may we do so as one heart, one mind, and one spirit. We are grateful to be on the shared land of the Spokane people and ask for the support of their ancestors. We ask that you recognize these injustices that forever changed the lives of the Spokane people and all their relatives. We agree to work together to stop all acts of continued injustices toward Native Americans and all our relatives. It is time for reconciliation. We must act upon the truths and take actions that will create restorative justice for all people. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Ms. Fister, please call the roll.
Council President Wilkerson.
Present.
Councilmember Dillon.
Here.
Councilmember Kathcart.
Present.
Councilmember Bingle. I'll come back to him. Councilmember Zepone.
Here.
Councilmember Klitsky.
Present.
Councilmember Navarrete.
Here.
Councilmember Bingle. I see him online, but maybe he can't speak right now or doesn't have his audio on.
All right, we'll connect. We'll let you confirm, Terry.
Okay.
All right, thank you. Tonight, we have poetry at the podium, and Lynn Short will be reading her poem, "Expectations." Lynn, come on down. Welcome.
One or another?
That one.
That one. Hello? Thanks. Okay, "Expectations." "I'd flown to Greece for spite. We were supposed to have gone together, but I went alone, sorrow stuffed deep in the bottom of my pack. The kindly grizzled hotel manager noticed my solitude, took sympathy. Next day, he rode me around Santorini on his scooter, showing me all of the bare, treeless island, the whitewashed nestled cottages, the polished sapphire water. He brought me to his family, none of whom spoke English. Dinner had been prepared. I was expected to participate. After prayers I didn't understand, we ate a simple meal, joined together in this most human of activities: strange pickled vegetables, buttery hummus, crusty bread, briny olives, and bony, tiny fish, eaten whole, that tasted of iron and the sea. Men, the men were overly attentive, as men tend to be around young women. I was awkward in their spotlight. They were raucous, laughing loudly over private jokes, drinking thick uzo, pouring me several shots. I was expected to participate. Several children chased each other around the giant battered wooden table that had held generations of meals, their mothers scolding them when they inadvertently tumbled into any adult. There, in the corner, like a remorseful statue, sat the widowed matriarch, all in black and lace, still, though her husband was long dead. Her participation was expected. She observed our antics with her bewildered smile, bemused perhaps with the American girl so out of place, beaming birthday cake at a funeral, overly frosted."
Thank you.
Okay, we're moving on to our consent agenda, and before we do, we have two folks signed up to speak, Dennis Flynn and then Justin Holler.
Hi, Council. Dennis Flynn. I live near St. Charles. There's a lot of important stuff here on this consent agenda, truly important things that are necessary for everyone's benefit in the running of our city that you all and the mayor elected to do. With so much necessary work going on that consumes massive amounts of our tax dollars, it leaves me as an average citizen wondering why we allocate resources to things not mandatory, as expressed in our charter, or required to maintain daily operations, especially in times of budget gaps, and asking to approve spending on things like parks. Spending our money on not only unimportant things, but divisive things like multicolored crosswalks, renaming buildings, moving monuments, and such seems counterproductive.
Thank you, Dennis.
And Justin, if you can hit star three.
Hello?
Go ahead. We can hear you.
Okay. Yeah, my name's Justin Holler, District One. I too am very frustrated with the copious amounts of money that is wasted on useless projects that seem to go nowhere. I'm still wondering where the rest of the money from the six projects for the Rainbow Crosswalks went. You allocated $300,000 for Rainbow Crosswalks, and as far as I know, you only built two of them at $50,000 each, and where's the other 40 grand? And like the other person said, it's divisive, and why would you paint a flag on the ground if knowing that there are studded tires that are going to ruin it, and you salt the roads, which further ruin it? And just, there's so many examples of wasted money. It's very frustrating to see that you're bad stewards with the money that you steal from us. And it's just, it's hard to tolerate on a weekly basis what you guys do. I'm really excited to find out when you guys are gonna lose the agendas and do something good for the city, like fix the potholes, fix the roads, versus this, you know, the alphabet soup identity agenda and all the climate change nonsense. When Bill Gates, what is it, the Obamas, and several other climate change people, they have beachfront property, which means that the climate change is a hoax, because we're not, the level of water isn't rising. So, you know, volcanoes do more to upset the environment than we do. So, please, stop this environmental crap. Stop the alphabet soup identity. Fix the roads. Stop wasting money on parks for homeless people to mitigate and defecate upon and use drugs. And maybe look out your window from your high tower.
And thank you, Justin. Your time is up.
And observe the stabbing.
Justin, your time is up. Thank you. Any council commentary? Seeing none, all those in favor of the consent agenda, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any noes? Abstentions, the consent agenda is passed. Ms. Fister.
Special Budget Ordinance C-36677, amending ordinance number C-36626, entitled in part, "An Ordinance Adopting a Biennial Budget for the City of Spokane and Amending It to Accept a Grant from the Department of Ecology for Climate Commitment Act Funding."
We have two public comments. John Alder. And after John Alder, Justin Holler.
John Alder, I live in northeast Spokane. I've been speaking up for climate change since 2018 in the city. I'm glad you're buying electric vehicles, and I hope some of this money will help seeing more solar panels in the city properties.
Thank you, John. Justin?
Four.
Go ahead, Justin. You're unmuted now.
Okay, yeah, Justin Holler, District One. I'm very frustrated with this climate change activist stuff. You guys have four different types of electric plug-ins for four different types of electric cars. You can't consolidate one type of charger. You buy Teslas for police that can't be used because of this big 17-inch screen. You don't think of the unintended consequences. You can't hand over a Tesla fully charged to the next shift. You have to wait for it to be charged. Or if you send a Tesla or another electric car home with somebody, they might not have the infrastructure to have that charged fast. I remember a day when meter maids, for lack of a better phrase, had these little go-karts, you know? And now we have full-blown electric cars, you know? It just, it seems like you're hell-bent on spending our money on useless pet projects that don't do anything good for the city. I'm really excited to find out when you guys are going to be more frugal and be better stewards with our money. I'm really excited to find out when that's gonna happen. That's it.
Thank you. Any council commentary? Prepare to vote. Thank you.
Councilmember Bingle, are you able to unmute?
Can you hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you now.
Okay, perfect. Aye.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Resolution 2025-29, declaring McCour power consultants MPC a sole source provider and authorizing the city to directly enter into contract with MPC in lieu of public bidding for maintaining annual compliance with NERC-FERC reliability standards for the waste energy facility for a five-year period, approximately $100,000 annually without public bidding. Total cost, $500,000.
There is no public comment. Any council commentary? Seeing none, prepare to vote. Councilmember Bingle?
Can you hear me? Aye.
Aye, thank you.
Resolution 2025-30, supporting the implementation of a no-turn-on-red policy within the Riverside neighborhood to enhance pedestrian safety and strengthen the pedestrian environment for residents and visitors to downtown Spokane.
We have several public comments. We'll start with Eric Lo. And then Will Hewings.
Good evening. I'm here tonight to speak in strong support of banning turns on red in the Riverside neighborhood. In the last decade, Spokane's Riverside neighborhood has had 19 pedestrian fatalities, an average of nearly two per year. Of the 19, only three of those fatalities occurred mid-block. The vast majority of deaths were at intersections. In December, the Minetta Transportation Institute of San Jose State University published a study examining turn-on-red policies nationwide. The study found that turns on red are unsafe for pedestrians, bicyclists, and drivers. The study noted that most drivers do not come to a complete stop and instead roll through the red light. This behavior is particularly dangerous for pedestrians and bicyclists, who are likely to be pushed into oncoming traffic. The study also found that turns on red result in only marginally lower emissions and only in certain limited instances. The energy savings through turns on red were so miniscule, and the danger to vulnerable road users so high that the study's authors recommended cities prohibit turns on red as the default practice, and to allow turns on red only at select intersections. Banning turns on red, coupled with robust automated enforcement through expansion of the red light camera program, is a cost-effective way to improve safety for all road users. I encourage the city to look further than just the Riverside neighborhood in eliminating turns on red. The Logan neighborhood is also a wildly dangerous location for pedestrians, particularly along Hamilton. During a recent visit to Frugal's Burgers at the intersection of Hamilton Street and Sharp Avenue, I witnessed no fewer than half a dozen near misses as vehicles rolled through the pedestrian crossing at a red light. Thank you for your consideration of this measure tonight. I look forward to additional safety measures in the near future.
Thank you, Eric. Will Hewings, and after Will, be John Alder.
Good evening. My name is Will Hewings, and I live downtown, just a few blocks from here. Good evening. As you know, my name's Will. And I proudly live downtown in Spokane's Riverside neighborhood since November 2019. I ride my bicycle 365 days a year, and I care deeply about transportation safety in our city. That is why I'm here, to speak against Resolution 2025-0030, the so-called no-turn-on-red policy sponsored by Zepone and Wilkerson. Now, I absolutely agree, something must be done to address traffic safety downtown. As someone that lives down here, and I deal with it all the time crossing the street, but this resolution, it's not the solution. As someone who lives, works, and plays in the heart of Spokane, I see the real problems every single day. This policy won't fix them. Let me give you some real-life examples. On Sprague and Stevens, just outside my door, I've witnessed countless incidents with pedestrians, mainly homeless individuals high on fentanyl and meth, simply walking straight into traffic without looking. One person was literally standing in the middle of the intersection the other day, right over by the satellite, directing stopping traffic as it was going south on Stevens. Okay, let's see. These aren't law-abiding pedestrians who will benefit from a no-turn-on-red sign. They're unpredictable, unstable, and in many cases, blocking sidewalks to use drugs all day long. So, I've also seen people trying to walk down the sidewalk because the sidewalks are so blocked, because Spokane Police Department is very sporadic on enforcement of people blocking the sidewalk. So, people walk out in the street, out into Sprague, to get around these people. So, and then if you read comments, I know you guys love your social media, but read the comments. It's these people, especially over on Division, people that are getting hit, the people that are high on drugs. You guys do nothing about that. You guys should be ashamed. But I'm against this.
Thank you, Will. John Alder, and after John, Abby Sax.
John Alder from northeast again. I'm all for safer pedestrian traffic, but without making driving downtown any tougher. What I wanna see is turn-only lights at all major intersections stat of no turns. Please try this option.
Thank you. Abby? And after Abby, Sarah Rose.
My name's Abby. I'm here in strong support of the no-turn-on-red's policy. I live in South Perry, and I work in the community building at Main and Brown. I moved to Spokane about six months ago from the East Coast, and one of the biggest shocks has been how unwalkable and unsafe I feel walking, running, and biking around Spokane, especially downtown. Not only do a lot of the drivers lack respect for pedestrians, but it's also, there's not any infrastructure that makes it safe for pedestrians and bikers. Every day to get into work, I walk across the intersection, across Brown on Main, across the intersection where Janet Mann was killed. To cross the street, I am at her memorial. I wait for the signs to let me go across the street, but I've still had a lot of close encounters where cars aren't looking right before turning, and they almost hit me. I get honked at quite a bit, even when the crosswalk is signaling for me to go. So, I support the ban on turn-on-red's, and I hope that it's implemented across Spokane and that there's policies in place that make it so that drivers are actually held accountable for violating it. Thank you.
Thank you. Sarah Rose, and after Sarah, Dave Bilson.
Hello, Council. My name is Sarah Rose from Spokane. I'd like to start my time by taking a moment of silence for everyone who has been hit and killed while walking in downtown Spokane. Thank you. Janet Mann was not high on drugs when she was hit and killed, crossing Main and Brown. I'm here to speak in strong support of banning turns on red in the Riverside neighborhood, as well as citywide in Spokane. I don't understand why this is only being implemented in Riverside neighborhood, as opposed to Spokane as a whole, when we know allowing turns on red puts everyone at risk all around town. I hope in the future, instead of adding signage to every single intersection, we can make a citywide policy to ban turn-on-red's and only add signs that say "turns on red allowed," where it makes sense to do so. While a sign is a great start, without enforcement, it is just that, a sign. And if we know anything about how well people follow rules dated on signs in Spokane, it's not great. For example, how many people treat the speed limit as a limit, as opposed to a minimum, if the police aren't nearby? The problem with no-turn-on-red signs is that they're up against the traffic lights. They're not where people are crossing. When you approach a red light and you're planning on turning on red, you're often looking for oncoming traffic, not towards the crosswalk or at that one special sign, at that one special intersection where it's not allowed. Please make sure these no-turn-on-red signs go up as soon as possible, preferably starting with those intersections where people have been hit and killed, like Main and Brown. I hope the next resolution focuses on banning turns on red next to all Spokane public schools and Spokane public libraries. Leading pedestrian intervals downtown at all intersections would be a great complementary next step to this in public safety. Thank you for bringing this forward, and please don't stop.
Thank you. Dave? And after Dave, Justin Holler.
Good evening, folks. Dave Bilson, Logan. I'd like to see right-on-red throughout the city. No right-on-red. Because I've almost got my toes run over too many times to count. Now, back in Aberdeen, where I'm from, they allow right-on-red, but it's illegal to enter a sidewalk, I mean, a crosswalk that is currently manned or womaned. The person crossing has to get all the way across the street until that person can cross that crosswalk. Okay, that's a good law. It keeps people from getting hit in sidewalks, I mean, in crosswalks. I've seen people get tickets in Aberdeen that had no idea of the law, and that's how they learned. Now, the cops would give them a warning the first time. Right? But crossing, going across a crosswalk with a vehicle while the crosswalk has somebody in it is dangerous. I have almost been hit too many times to count. And so, I would suggest that law as well. Thou shalt not take that right-on-red if there's anybody in the crosswalk. That is a law that will save lives. And a few toes. Because that's what I've been most dangerous. They go after my damn toes. I don't know why. Thank you.
Thank you, Dave. Justin?
Go ahead, Justin.
Yeah, you can't really mandate good behavior, but you can enforce the laws that are already on the books and allow law enforcement to do their job, which, as far as I know, they haven't really been able to do their job recently. You guys put a kibosh on the Traffic Division, not allowing law enforcement to do their job. So, maybe allow them to do their job and just enforce the laws that are already on the books, especially at dangerous intersections like Third and Division or between Sprague and Division, or between Sprague and Third, where all the meth monsters and the dwelling list who are looking for pain meds are lurching out into traffic. Issue them traffic tickets, you know? Give them a $500 fine for jaywalking and start enforcing that. And you got copious amounts of people walking into traffic, looking at their phones on Foothill, Spokane Falls Boulevard. You know, just jaywalking. They don't even look up. They just walk in the traffic. And I'm old enough to play Frogger when I was a kid, and I don't walk into traffic. You know, I just, I don't get it. Maybe enforce the laws that are already in the books, and then you could balance the budget by issuing jaywalking tickets. And if they can't pay the ticket, let them work off the fine by cleaning up the city. It, you know, you could balance the budget really simple with that.
Thank you, Justin. Any council commentary? Councilmember Kathcart?
Yeah, I'll be quick. So, I'll support this kind of extension of the no-turn-on-red. We already do have some intersections that have this. My plea has been, and I have made this plea multiple times, and so, I just hope to God we don't see a pedestrian get killed as a result. Signage. We need signage. And it cannot be the white with the black lettering that we have had for 50 years. It's gotta be something that stands out, that draws your attention, that makes it very clear. Because as soon as a pedestrian thinks, oh, no turn-on-red, I'm gonna take a step out, and then boom. Because we didn't put a lack of signage, I'm very fearful of what will happen in that scenario. We gotta be smart and strategic, but I think that signage is the most important piece to this. And so, I'll be supporting this tonight, and hopefully, before anything is implemented, we see some really standout signage to alert folks of the change.
Councilmember Bingle, then Councilmember Dillon. Councilmember Bingo, then Councilmember Dillon.
Yeah, I'll be supporting this one tonight as well. Um, you know, I, I think that it's an, an interesting pilot program. I hope that it goes really well. Um, I would encourage all pedestrians to, um, as was stated, you know, when you're crossing a road, don't be on your phone, uh, be paying attention. This is something that will take time for people to get used to, um, but it could be effective. You know, Eric talked about, um, you know, Hamilton and Mission and Hamilton and, and Sharp and Hamilton and, and just about every intersection, uh, up in that area in the Logan neighborhood, and it's, it's very dangerous. I've, I've been, you know, at Frugal's a number of times in my life, uh, especially in this position, and, uh, it is dangerous to, to cross there as well. So what I hope happens from this is that I hope we see something that's positive for the city, uh, that could then be expanded out into other areas where there are dangerous crossings for whatever reason. And so I hope this is successful. Um, I have, I have high hopes for this one, and, uh, we'll see how it, how it ends up playing out.
Right. Councilmember Dillon?
Really excited to support this policy. It's something I've wanted to see for, uh, quite some time, and it's evidence-based, it's best practices. Um, I'm, I am hopeful that this is the beginning of something much larger. We have seen a lot of success with, uh, banning right turn on red, uh, in a couple neighborhoods in District Two, uh, 25th and Grand, near, uh, daycare, uh, church and parks, uh, 29th and Perry, uh, Freya and Southeast, and so, um, I really do see, uh, a lot of evidence as well supporting this, as Mr. Lowe pointed out. To the national study, there's also a study done by the Institute of, uh, Traffic Engineers in Washington DC, where they, uh, put in a hundred, uh, intersections with, um, no turn on red restrictions, and they saw driver-to-driver conflicts were reduced by 97% and vehicle pedestrian conflicts were reduced by 92% following the installation, um, with consistent, uh, signage, um, and public information and awareness, and how, um, that was also done in tandem with a lot of, uh, education, um, particularly around pedestrian, uh, safety and access. So this really is a, a low-cost, uh, safety tool that I think, um, will, uh, be really positive change for the city of Spokane.
Great. I'll be supporting this. It is about changing people's behavior, and it has to start somewhere. And yes, pedestrians have to be accountable as well. It's not just cars. So look both ways when you cross the street and look up. True confession, I was one of those people walking across the street, looking down on my cellphone, totally oblivious, so I'm thankful for the driver in the car that was paying attention. So we all have some work to do. Prepare to vote. Thank you.
Resolution 2025-31, authorizing the relocation of the John R. Monahan Monument from the city public right-of-way.
We have several public comments. We'll have Will Hughlings, John Alder, and then Andrew Rolls.
Good evening again. My name is Will Hughlings, and I live downtown. So as you all know, I'm a proud US Navy veteran who served this country honorably, um, just like Lieutenant John R. Monahan did over a century ago. I'm here tonight to furiously oppose Resolution 2025-0031, a disgraceful attempt to remove a monument honoring a Spokane-born American hero. Lieutenant Monahan was not just a naval officer, he was a trailblazer. He was the first person from Washington State to attend the US Naval Academy, a member, a member of Gonzaga University's first graduating class, and a young man who gave his life in uniform, trying to protect his fellow sailors during the Second Samoan Civil War. He was beheaded in that act of bravery. So you wonder why it says savage on the, on the plaque. Isn't that a savage act, beheading people? And unfortunately, in the late 1800s, that's just the language they used. But of, of course, Democrats, you guys gotta change history. You take down statues, but you erect statues of 12-foot woke-looking people like in New York City, which is highly offensive to a lot of black people, and especially me as a minority. But I just find it offensive because you guys have been trying to do this. Now you've figured out a way, you're gonna, you're gonna say it has something to do with, uh, what was it, traffic or whatever? Like, I hope that when you take this down, that you put it up and you honor this, this Monahan, who, like I said, is a, is a Navy veteran just like myself. I take great pride on my service, that I served my country honorably, which none of you guys ever served in our military, except Ms. Klitschke there. But that's what I hope. So if you take it down, at least put it up. Don't be trying to hide it, and just so you know, they were trying, they wanted to take down the Abraham Lincoln statue, the 16th President of the United States, the same guy that freed the slaves. So they were trying to do that last year. They threw red paint on it because they called him a colonizer and he owned slaves or whatever supposedly. So that's what you guys do. So feel ashamed, but thank you.
Thank you, Will.
Since seeing this statue first time in 1977, I never realized that the white was there in the first place. Finding out that he committed genocide on her friends that live in the Pacific Islands, I've decided no more statues for genocide. You could put it in Matt Shay's backyard and let them gawk at it.
Thank you, John. Andrew Rolls, and then Dennis Flynn.
Council President, uh, members of council, good evening. I'm Andrew Rolls. I'm a resident of the North Indian Trail Neighborhood, uh, of the North Indian Trail Neighborhood. Uh, the fundamental concern for most members of the community that have contacted you regarding the statue relates to the bronze frieze and description of the actions that led to Lieutenant Monahan's death. It erroneously depicts Samoan fighters as African and, as African, and the weapons they wielded as spears when they actually used to tremendous effect, modern rifles, uh, equipped, uh, supplied to them by the German military. Other members of the community object to the statue of, uh, as a representation of American imperialism. They cite actions taken by the commander of the naval flotilla operating in Samoa, uh, who ordered naval gunners to open fire on Samoan villages. Focusing specifically on Lieutenant Monahan and what he did, please consider the following effects. Uh, though he was a part of that broader military operation, what is now American Samoa, he was not the task force commander that, uh, issued the order to open fire on Samoan villages. Uh, his body, as was previously noted, was ritually decapitated by Samoan fighters after they killed him and the rest of the landing party that was, that he was a deputy commander of. It is likely this particular action that Spokane residents of the time deemed to be savage. The US Navy was operating, uh, in this area in response to the German Navy's presence. To those who promote the narrative that Lieutenant Monahan's statue is a monument to American imperialism, uh, please note, the eastern portion of the broader Samoan islands, uh, were ceded to the United States as a result of the Treaty of Berlin in 1899 rather than by annexation. About two decades later, the Treaty of Versailles, which brought World War I to a conclusion, subsequently ceded nearly all of the German Empire's holdings in the South Pacific to Japan. American Samoa's status as the US protected, protector, precluded the horrors that would be inflicted on other Japanese colonies, uh, before and during World War II. As a reflection of that reality, Samoans enthusiastically, uh, coordinated the defense of their islands with the US military, forming the First, First Samoan Battalion of the United States Marine Corps, beginning a longstanding tradition of Samoan service in the US military. Amo, American Samoans serve in all branches of the military at the highest per capita rate of, of participation of any state or territory in the country. Their warrior spirit has contributed greatly to the defense of the United States. To the members of the Samoan community that have appealed to you to seek redress for the, for the lives of their ancestors lost in this combat action, I would like to challenge them to refocus their efforts, not on tearing down, but on building up. Find a way to memorialize, for example, the exemplary service of thousands of Samoan men and women and other Pacific Islanders who have served in the nation's armed forces with courage, zeal, and determination. Just as you wish not to have the lives of your ancestors be overlooked, uh, so also do I and many other members of our community wish for Lieutenant Monahan's too-short life not to be disregarded and forgotten. Thank you.
Thank you, Andrew. Dennis Flynn, and then Dave Bilsman.
Hey, Council. Dennis Flynn, I live near St. Charles. History teaches us lessons about the good and the bad, the consequential and the inconsequential, allowing us to look back on yesterday with the lens of today, but all too often, we also fail to consider the lens of yesterday. Should we rename Washington Adams, Jefferson, Madison, and Monroe Streets because they acted within the slavery framework of their time that seems incomprehensible to us? Should we remove the Lincoln statue because he temporarily rescinded our core right of habeas corpus? Should we rename Martin Luther King Boulevard because he didn't live up to the matrimonial fidelity as professed religion required of him? To me, a much better solution to the Monahan Monument problem would be to add a second plaque that identifies that we understand the time and history of the first plaque that found it acceptable to use language we currently deem unacceptable, that we're erecting the second plaque to announce to time immemorial our advanced and enlightened moral high ground, and that we hope future generations will be just as kind to us because we have our own sins to be ashamed of, such as mutilating young people with cross-sex hormone therapies and surgeries, praising the SRHD for causing illnesses with forced mRNA clot shots and lifelong injury, to historically marginalized communities by shutting down their learning environments, not to mention the tens of millions of unborn BIPOC lives that apparently didn't matter when we aborted them. But no, the incivility present around us all today probably means the only way to protect this monument from desecration actually is to move it. That being said, it's laughable, you're claiming some baloney sausage region about, reason about traffic improvements. Just be honest that the mob is getting their way. Thanks.
Thank you.
Good evening, folks. Dave, Logan. I applaud this. This is the necessary thing to have, to get it moved. Several organizations I've been partying with have discussed taking it down ourselves because of that offensive statement about Samoan people. I did a thing there, uh, 420 celebration there 10 or 12 years ago with some friends. It was just four or five of us, and they just wanted a place to chalk, and I was there to defend them if necessary, and sure enough, so many from across the street, you know what I'm talking about, called the police, police showed up. I threw First Amendment left and right. You can't make a stop, and besides, look what it says. It calls American Samoans savage foe. That cop just looked at me, turned around, and walked off. That's how offensive that phrase is, and I'm not even BIPOC. I'm a white boy, and I'm offended by it. So I'm glad to see it moved to the family's mausoleum. That's a wonderful place to move it, and they can have that damn plaque, too. I think this is something that is a long time coming. I can remember the Occupy movement talked about yarding it down, but we couldn't find a heavy enough truck. So yeah, let's move that thing. Let's do it your way, not our way, because if it doesn't happen your way, it might have to happen our way. Thank you. Please pass this.
Thank you, Dave. Any council commentary? Councilmember Catcart? And then Councilmember Bingo.
Yeah, um, a few things on this. So I guess most frustrating for me is if we think back on the process here, there really, there, there was one, but yet there wasn't one. So a year ago, give or take, I can't remember the exact date, we approved, uh, a change that would give, um, the Human Rights Commission the ability to identify, uh, basically statues like this that, that perhaps should be removed and make recommendation to council. At the time, I voted against that, and at the time I said, you know, we need to have a process. We should hear from all sides. We have heard from no sides. It's been very infuriating. You look in your packet, you will find zero findings of fact, you'll find zero information about the history, uh, good, bad, or otherwise, there's nothing there. There is no process, no community engagement, no, none of it. And that, to me, is the most infuriating part. Whether we move the statue, uh, get rid of it, keep it, there should be a public process. And part of the reason for that is that this statue in particular is a part of the Riverside Historic District, which is a nationally recognized historic district. Um, it's been in place for many decades, and I will just, if I can, with permission, I can read from the text. It says here, under the nomination form for that, um, either end of the public square or section of Boulevard is anchored by a triangular traffic island containing commemorative statue, uh, statuary. On the east, at the entrance to the intersection with Monroe Street Bridge, is the Monahan Monument honoring a local hero and casualty of the partition of Samoa in 1899, unveiled at this general location in 1906. The nine-foot bronze likeness of Ensign John Robert Monahan in US Navy uniform, uh, he was graduated from the Naval Academy at Annapolis in 1895, is mounted atop a high marble pedestal with stepped base. Fixed to the front of the pedestal is a bronze bass relief depicting the young Ensign's heroic efforts to protect his wounded commander from hostile natives near Apia. The monument is oriented to the southeast in the direction of the westbound traffic. So that's in the nominating form, and it was, it was obviously approved. It is also recognized by, uh, the Smithsonian. It's recognized in their Museum of Art, um, and in fact, they go a little further, um, and, um, if I can read from this text, if that's okay? Um, it says, "Full-length figure of Ensign John Robert Monahan in his Naval Academy dress uniform leaning on his sword, right foot extended. The bronze figure stands atop a stepped limestone base that features a relief depicting Ensign Monahan standing by his wounded superior officer, Lieutenant Lansdale, and other dead soldiers while under attack by Samoan forces." It goes on to say, um, "Ensign, uh, John Robert Monahan was a Spokane native who lost his life in the Spanish-American War, refusing to abandon his wounded superior officer, Lieutenant Lansdale, during an ambush by island tribesmen in Samoa in 1899." Now, I think we can all agree that the, the plaque, uh, does use language that we don't use today, and it's a great learning opportunity, I think, for all of us. We could place a second plaque that recognizes, hey, there is history here, recognizing that history. We've never discussed it. We've never had one serious conversation about that history. Is what I just read accurate, or is some of the comments we heard earlier accurate? I, I, I mean, we've not took contact to the military, we have not done any of these things that I would think that you would take, uh, to essentially upend a national historic district in a lot of ways. Um, at the other end of that Riverside area is another statue, um, and we decided to build a dog park. We didn't move it anywhere. We, I mean, we moved it 15 feet, essentially, is what we did. So it's entirely possible to move something. So if, in fact, the need for this traffic, uh, revision is there, and I really don't believe it is, um, and it was really concocted well after the, the process to identify this statue as one for removal, um, it, to me, that does not in itself necessitate the removal of the statue. That is a decision, political decision, a civic, a social, or whatever decision, but that is not a decision because of traffic changes. Um, that's just the choice that we have made in how we're gonna address traffic there. We could easily move the monument somewhere else. And, and I really do question, I mean, if something is of value, recognizing the Smithsonian, to take it and move it to a private mausoleum, I don't, I just question the appropriateness of that sort of an action. Again, we can, we can talk about what it says, we can address what it says, I think we can clarify, but to take away history, what we're supposed to be learning from, does not make any sense to me at all. Now, was he a war hero? Was he a, a war criminal? Again, we've never had that debate, we've never had that hearing, we've never aired those pieces. I don't have a clear answer on the history. I've read many different things, but neither has this council. And so, um, for me, if you're going to do something of substantial like this, to move a monument that has been in place for over 100 years, um, you, you should actually have much more, uh, hearing and thoughtfulness around the process for that. And at the end of the day, maybe it's the decision that we would move it. But we would at least have gone through a real thoughtful methodology to identify whether or not that was the right choice. or not that was the right choice, and perhaps where it would go is the right place. So I'll leave it at that.
Councilmember Bingo?
Yeah, thank you. I, I think there's been a lot of really great testimony on why we should not move it. I reiterate, you know, almost all of it, but I've been, you know, pushing the additional plaque premise for a while now. And the reason is, is for a lot of the reasons that people said here, but I think it gave us an opportunity there to, you know, acknowledge, you know, for us, you know, some of the sins of the past, but to also make an aspirational statement to where we're going, right? Like, not even 100 years ago, right, was still Jim Crow, you know? 160 years ago, right, we're in, we're in slavery. And, you know, we've, we have made significant progress as a culture on, you know, acknowledging and appreciating other cultures and people who are here, and not, not having, you know, the same superiority thoughts about, you know, other nations. And so I think there, there could have been a great way where we, as a group and as a city, collectively said, hey, we're going to acknowledge once and for all, this language right here isn't okay, the depiction right here isn't okay. I think it was Andrew who talked about, you know, they were actually using modern rifles with great effect, you know? We could, we could acknowledge all of that right here and then say, and here's where we're going as a city and hopefully as a country, right? We commit to these certain values, right, that we will treat everybody the way that we want to be treated and go on. I mean, there was really, I think, this is, to me, just a significant missed opportunity for us to, you know, heal some wounds of old and also make some, some statements toward the future and where we're going, casting some vision for the city of Spokane, which is what, you know, I've been advocating for from the beginning here. And so I'm sad about this one, mostly because, again, I think it's, it's just a missed opportunity in my, in my mind.
Councilmember Dylan?
Thank you. So this has been a years-long process, I think. In some iteration, we've had different debates and discussions about this, both on the dais and in the public since 2020 and even before that. You know, I've heard from historians, I've heard from Navy veterans, I've heard from family members, and then also heard from the Pacific Islander community. And what we're doing is, we are relocating this in concert with many of those folks that I mentioned. This is a very mediated process where people did come together. And on the topic of the Riverside intersection, you know, this has been something that's, it's been long in the works. Back when I was a legislative aide about 15 years ago, you know, there was already some discussions underway. I think that intersection from Monroe along Riverside is one of the most problematic intersections, I honestly think, in the whole state. It's really confusing, it's chaotic. If you are riding a bike and going to Brown's Edition down Riverside, and you take that right turn between the Monahan statue and cars, cars merging onto Riverside, it is really terrifying. So this is, again, I think, long overdue changes on, on both fronts, you know, to improve the public right of way. It's really important that we listen to communities that are most impacted here, and for them, this is a daily reminder of a lot of the, the pain and, and trauma. And then we're also making a street safer, and so that's something that I'm proud to vote for.
Thank you. Councilmember Klitschke?
Yeah, on the transportation-related reasons that we're doing this, I've worked in downtown Spokane my entire adult life, and I lived in Brown's Edition for nine of those years. And Riverside should have been a more scenic, prettier, slower way to commute home from my office, and I took first and second all the time because it's so, it's such a long crossing, it's such a chaotic intersection, and the intersection before it is even more chaotic. And sometimes people are speeding to get through three lights in a row and making turns on red. It's, it's, we need to do something to address the chaos, and more may be coming at this area. It needs to. We've, we've put some strange geometry there, and anything we can do to make it more safe, it's also quite beautiful. So we, we need to work to make this intersection better. We've got a reasonable solution that's been negotiated with multiple parties, and I think this is the best path forward for this.
Well, I'll just say I'm grateful to the family and the community. This has been going on for over three years, that the communities have been coming to us, and we have had testimony in this chamber time and time again. What I really want to say, though, is most importantly, I think, with this, we acknowledge the shared history from different perspectives without erasing anyone's history. So with that, prepare to vote.
No.
Ordinance C 36675 relating to the Design Review Board amending Sections 4.13.015 and 4.13.025 of the Spokane municipal code.
There is no public comment. Any council commentary? Prepare to vote.
Aye.
Thank you.
First reading ordinance C 36676 authorizing and supporting the creation of a play streets and neighborhood block party program adopting a new Section 168.84.090 of the Spokane municipal code. Further action is deferred on first reading ordinance.
Thank you. Eric Lo, Will Huelings, and then Sarah Rose.
Good evening. I'm a huge fan of this proposal. I think that Spokane neighborhoods will benefit greatly from the opportunity to open their streets to their, the people who live there, the visitors who, who want to enjoy It's, it's a long time coming to return streets to people. Our streets have been taken over by cars, and neighborhood streets in particular are, have been hit hard by cars driving too fast through them, driving inattentively through them. And I think this is a wonderful opportunity for neighborhoods to really see what can happen when those streets are returned to people. I hope this, that my, my goal or my, my hope for this would be that every neighborhood in the city take advantage of this at least once this summer. And I also hope that the, the city takes the opportunity to study how we can potentially make some of these measures permanent or semi-permanent. There's a lot of opportunity here in Spokane to return, you know, we've got over 2,200 miles, lane miles of streets in the city, and we don't need all of them for cars, especially neighborhood streets. I think there's a lot of opportunity for local access only, for cars to be, the second priority and the first priority be people, particularly children. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Eric. Will Huelings?
My name is Will, and I live downtown Spokane. So I'm here tonight to voice my strong opposition to ordinance C 36676, yet another tone-deaf and unnecessary policy being pushed by two council members. This ordinance proposes allowing neighborhoods to temporarily shut down public streets, yes, streets, for so-called play streets and block parties, supposedly to create safe, car-free spaces for community activities. I say absolutely not. Let me be clear, streets were designed for transportation, for cars, trucks, motorcycles, and bicycles. They were not designed to be turned into playgrounds or social gathering zones. Spokane already has dozens of public parks. You guys want to spend all this money now upgrading, but now you want to shut down streets also, and community centers where these type, types of activities can and should take place. This is just another feel-good distraction being rolled out from June through Halloween. Meanwhile, the city is drowning in real dangerous problems: rising crime, homeless encampments, fentanyl overdoses, and open drug use on our streets and sidewalks. Every single day, law-abiding residents are forced to step around attics, passed out in their doorways, overdosing on the sidewalks. But this is the best you guys could come up with, shutting down just so you can have little block parties. Nobody cares about block parties. If you read the comments online, especially on Facebook, they do not care about block parties. Read Lisa Brown's, all the comments on her, her, her page. They, they care more about what I talk about, public safety. That's what matters.
Thank you, Will. Your time is up. Sarah Rose? And after Sarah Rose, Justin Holler.
Hello, Council. My name is Sarah Rose from Spokane, and I care a lot about block parties. Streets are places where things happen. I'm here to speak in strong support of making it easier for neighborhoods to host block parties and use local streets for fun, community-oriented activities. I hope we see play streets and activities popping up around public schools and libraries especially. So much of our public space is dedicated to moving cars and the storage of cars, and essentially, none of it is dedicated to kids and families, save for a few sterile structured playgrounds. There's a great nonprofit called Better Block, who helps communities transform spaces with paint, DIY furniture, lighting, and most importantly, food and live music. I would love to see the city, the city go a step further and streamline a process to utilize their online resources, such as templates for cardboard and plywood furniture, which we could then reuse within the neighborhoods at bus shelters, school crosswalks, and parks. Thank you for bringing this resolution forward. We could all use more places to gather and more community parties to spend time with our neighbors at. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. Justin Holler?
Go ahead, Justin.
Hello?
Go ahead, Justin. Yep, we can hear you.
Yeah, I don't know what all the hubbub is about this new-fangled, I don't even know how to describe it. It just, you know, like I said before, I played Frogger as a kid, you know? People need to adapt, improvise, and overcome. You know, you, you can't make a rule for the exception. You can't mandate behavior, you can't force people to walk or ride their bike or take public transportation. People are going to transport themselves around the city the way they feel best doing it. And no amount of supposed safety is going to make people ride or walk their bike anymore. It just, it's not going to happen. I don't see anyone riding their bike below 45 degrees hardly at all. You guys won't clean up the existing infrastructure that exists, you won't maintain the existing infrastructure, and so I, I don't know where you get these ideas, if, if, you know, it's, it would be really exciting to find out that you, that you would drop the ideology and just do what's best for the city instead of getting these ideas from on high. I, I'm really excited to see when that's going to happen. Just ditch the ideology, do what's best for the city instead of listening to the George Soros directive, or, or your climate change directive, people, or whatever, you know, directives you have. It just, it just doesn't seem natural and normal that you guys think up this stuff, and nobody's going to ride or walk their bike or take the bus anymore than, than, you know, no matter what you do. That's it.
Thank you, Justin. That concludes our legislative business. We will now proceed to open forum of our meeting, of our meeting. There will be no clapping, no cheering, no booing, and no public outbursts. There is a two-minute time limit, and please direct all your comments to the chair. We will start with Ryan Hansen. And after Ryan, Dave Duncan.
Good evening, Council. Thanks for having me here. I wanted to bring something before you. Last year, decided to build a garage, and my wife and I just had a baby, and she's nine months old, and so we thought a garage would be nice to be able to get her in and out. I've been in a lot of pain point with the city permit department. We filed for the permit February 17th, and there's kind of two things that have happened since then. The turnaround in SLA is really slow, so they will ask for a plan review, and we turn it around 24 hours later, and then they get 14 days to ask another question. And so I've kind of been in that process now, it's May 12th, for quite some time. And then the other thing is, I've just had a lot of really rude interactions with the department. And it's just something that kind of came to the point where I went down there today, talked to one of the people, and found myself apologizing to her and trying to calm her down because she was very frustrated with being overworked and having too much to do. And I figured I'd come down and raise it because I think it's worth looking at. You know, I'm trying to put my money back into the local economy and keep a local business going, I'm trying to do an improvement to my property, which will drive my property tax bill up. And it just feels like in a housing crisis and a time when we're trying to build, some of this stuff is really a barrier for me to want to continue to do this. And I have some examples I'd be happy to share with all of you of how we've really tried to be proactive through this and provide everything back and, and be pleasant. So thank you for hearing my concern and appreciate your time.
Thank you, Ryan. Thank you for coming down. Will Huelings? No, Dave? And then Will.
Good evening, Council. Nice to see you all this evening. May 15th, Peace Officers Memorial Day was created by Congress and signed into law by President Kennedy on October 1st, 1962. It was further designated the calendar week of each year during which May 15th occurs as Police Week. May 11th to 17th this year is Police Week. Every president since Kennedy has recognized this week and holiday. I read through several of the proclamations and speeches of our presidents, and one of them really struck me. At the National Peace Officers Memorial Service on May 15th, 2013, President Obama said in part, "The fallen officers we honor today put themselves on the front lines of that fight to preserve that quality of community and to protect the roots of our greatness. They exemplified the very idea of citizenship, that with our God-given rights come responsibilities and obligations to ourselves and to others. They embodied that idea. That's the way they died. That's how we must remember them, and that's how we must live. We can never repay our debt to these officers and their families, but we must do what we can with all that we have to live our lives in a way that pays tribute to their memory. That begins, but does not end, by gathering here with heavy hearts to carve their names in stone so that we all know them and their legacy will endure." We, all of us here, have 15 officers carved into that memorial, the memorial here by the Public Safety Building, and there's one in Olympia as well. Officer Ephraim J. Hubbard, Officer Robert J. Rusk, Officer Henry A. Stotko, Officer Alfred B. Waterbury, Captain John T. Sullivan, Officer Frederick E. Goddard, Officer Michael F. Tynan, Officer William D. Nelson, Officer Frederick A. Germain, Detective Roy Fordice, Officer John Miller, Officer George P. Lancaster, Detective Brian F. Orchard, Sergeant Robin B. Best, and Lieutenant John J.D. Anderson.
Thank you. Thank you. Will? And after Will, Monica Tittle?
Good evening again. My name is Will, and I live downtown Spokane. I'm just going to be speaking on what I usually speak on. I mean, I stood out in front of my building just yesterday, and I had to call Crime Check twice. And what I have noticed is, you know, I support SPD 100%, but what I've noticed is they're very sporadic on enforcement. And as someone that calls Crime Check, they're not very good at responding to calls, especially downtown. Maybe they just get tired because there's so many calls. Maybe they just get tired because there's so many calls, but it's outrageous the stuff that I see in other people that live downtown. As someone that's a Republican, that's someone that is very active, I was on the ballot, you know, just recently and I, you know, I ran for precinct committee officer. So downtown's my precinct. I'm the voice of the Republicans that live downtown. But what I notice, like I said, it's very sporadic. You've got people still openly doing drugs, you've still got mentally, I mean, really crazy people walking around. You've got people getting beat up with baseball bats, you've got people getting stabbed, and this is in front of my building. You've got people getting drug overdose, people dying. I've watched them. This is not just something just because Will, you know, he's just some mean guy. No, I'm actually care about public safety, which I don't think you guys do. I think you guys care a lot about other things than what actually people talk about. And the mayor, she should be ashamed. I watch her post, it seems like all she does is likes to get photo ops. And trust me, I comment. It's only a matter of time before, we can't comment on her post, but trust me, I'm going to be, I'm going to be going crazy on her post.
Thank you, Will. Monica? Is Monica Tittle in the house? Is online?
She was back there earlier.
Okay, let's go on to Eugene Knowles.
Eugene Knowles, been here in Spokane since 2010. I usually try to catch the wave on some issue that's come up. And so I'll just, I've been working on this thing using colors, but I'm going to kind of drift away a little bit from that. And I promised somebody I'd get on the number five, which is the homeless crisis, and number six, which is the shelter crisis, and number seven, which is the camping crisis, and number eight, which is the street refugee crisis, and number nine, I call it the health crisis, but it's fentanyl and cold weather time. But what I'm going to do in the short time I have here is describe why shelters fail. Number one, site selection. Number two, the design of it. Number three, the financing setup. Number four, the occupant, manager, and their staff, and number five, the services. That's why Trent went down and that's why we can't put another one out there. So I'm going to leave it there for now, a little food for thought. I'll get back on my color system next time.
Thank you, Eugene.
Her name's Monica.
Monica? Oh, come on. Oh, sorry.
Good evening, city councilmembers. How are you tonight? Happy Mother's, belated Mother's Day to any mothers up there. I have a few friends, I'm currently homeless, and I'm finding it very, very difficult to get any form of resources when it comes to housing and things of that nature. But I have friends that live in their cars and they're being harassed by the police anywhere they go, truck stops, rest areas, which is kind of stupid to harass someone at a rest area when it's a rest area for a reason. I understand people parking in neighborhoods is not a good thing, especially if they're using drugs. Things need to be done about that, I do agree. And downtown has become so unbelievably violent, I'm scared to come downtown and I know most of the homeless people that are down there. I have lost 30 friends just this year alone to fentanyl. So the war on fentanyl is, it's going to be a long one, it's going to be a hard one. But in the meantime, I don't want to be on the street anymore. So we need to find some way to get more funding, to get or build more housing or shelters so that people aren't on the street because I am running from a very, very serious, very severe domestic violence situation where this man has told me he's going to finish where he started and I'm terrified of him. And it's not a joke. This man wants to kill me. And if I get put out of this shelter that I'm in, thank God for Revive, I don't know what I'm going to do. So I want to fight as hard as possible to find the funding that we need to get anybody that needs housing, that wants housing, is willing to get up and do whatever it takes to get housing.
Thank you, Monica. Your time is up.
It's time to get it done. Some of us don't want it, I do.
Will Quinn, and after Will, will be Robert Till.
Will Quinn, and the consequences of rental caps. Mom and pop landlords will exit the marketplace resulting in much higher rents or conversion to condos. As stated previously, the rental home we sold in December of 2024 is now a single-family residence and the duplex we sold in February of this year has undergone major rental adjustments. The upper two-bedroom, one-bath unit has been leased by the new owner for $14.25 a month. Our rent was $9.75. The lower one-bedroom is going for $1,200, up from $9.50. Today, we listed our five and seven-unit apartments. Rents can be expected to conservatively rise by 20%. With mom and pops representing approximately 41% of the rental market, this exit will be devastating to lower-income renters. Now let's return to my prior week's discussions of tenant destruction and tenant advocate Terry Anderson's likely response. No problem, Will. Landlords have legal recourse through the court system to recoup monetary damages. Well, Terry, let me tell you how in the hell that's working out. I have had over 8,000 in collections since 2023 with another 6,840 to be added at the end of this week. I've collected 400 bucks. Not to mention the number of units to which I suffered $500 to $1,500 losses and did not pursue. Okay. Next week, I will discuss how not just five of you, but all seven have fallen prey to the "we have a shortage of affordable housing" mantra perpetuated by Catholic charities and other members of the poverty-for-profit industrial... God, how about that, Bessie? Isn't that something? Two minutes!
Thank you, Will. Your time is up.
Perfect, and I never practice.
Robert Till, welcome.
Uh-oh, what is this?
You can just put that back.
Let's put it back here.
Perfect.
Okay, next week, guys.
Hi, thank you, council. I live in District 2 and I work downtown at the Cracker Building. And, you know, downtown has had a lot of losses lately. We've had a lot of business closings, there's vacancies, there's a lot of homeless problems, but one thing that does really work are the arts. Events like Terrain, First Fridays, and Bazaar, they gather huge turnouts and bring in revenue to the artists, the businesses, and the city itself. For instance, the, recently, the night markets going gangbusters. It's just a great place that's making a lot of positivity out of an empty parking lot. So I'd like to build on this revenue generation and positive impact by seeing the city secure downtown studio space for artists, maybe something similar to the Hive. And I'd like to think of it as investment in the future because if you have artists downtown, you know, people come downtown, they want to be in the mix. They want to see something they can't see at the mall or get at the mall. So they want to, you know, see something happening, grab a drink at Amaru's, et cetera. And the artists working downtown will patronize local businesses, be on the streets, making everything seem livelier and safer. And there's also great opportunities for public-private partnerships since many of these businesses do show the artists in their performance spaces as well. So, yeah, and also, I forgot, most importantly, another important thing is it does help bring people downtown. Many people are very leery of downtown. I think it's good to have people come down for a positive experience, but creative types do need space to create and when it's gone, they're priced out. You just really don't have the chance to get it again. So with a 25% vacancy rate in downtown, real estate I don't think will ever be cheaper. So I would like to see the downtown use this perfect opportunity to be able to secure some rehearsal space and creative space for artists. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Howard. Our last comment tonight will be Justin Haller.
Go ahead, Justin.
Hello, everyone on City Council. This is Justin Haller, District 1. I appreciate the fact that you guys, most of you, show up week after week and pretend to appease us or at least pretend to listen. It's not an easy job. I don't know that I'd want to do that job, but I appreciate the fact that most of you show up week after week and are there. But it's very frustrating to know that five of you have this agenda that it's just, it's clear as day, it's crystal clear that this agenda for the climate change and the alphabet soup stuff, I mean, it's not a natural agenda, it's not homegrown, it's not, it's not out of the ether, it's something that you guys have been told to do. And I'm really excited to find out when you guys actually have some individual thought and individual opinions versus this agenda that's on high that is unnatural and weird and spastic and, I don't know, if amoral is the right word, but I just, it's, I'm really excited to find out when you guys actually, you know, start thinking for yourselves instead of go for the okey-dokey. It's just, I wish that you guys would just listen to rational, rational thought and just go, you know what, what's good for the city? Is it rainbow crosswalks or is it potholes? Is it fixing roads and paving roads or giving more money to the FDA? You know, it just, none of this stuff makes sense if you look at it from a bird-eye view.
And thank you, Justin. Your time is up. Thank you all. That concludes our open forum for this evening. I want to entertain a motion for adjournment.
It's been moved.
Second.
It's been moved to second to adjourn all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any notes, abstentions? We are adjourned. Please join us next Monday night on the 19th.